Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting together to order. It's Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. I'd first ask that everyone stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have no condolences this evening. However, I would just take a brief moment to recognize all those veterans and first responders who have passed. As a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded. And pursuant to section twenty of chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Our first item is from the October fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving item B, uh, meeting minutes of the October twelfth, um, Town Council meeting, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mister Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Mister George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on. Item B, announcements from the present. I have none. Item C, proclamations. We have none. D, citizens' open forum. Any citizens wishing to speak? Just name and address, please. Mrs. Neri?
Good evening, and thank you. A little bit, oh, Pat Neri, Lakeside Drive.
Thank you.
And a little bit later, you will be discussing a possible discontinuance of the abandoned portion of Lakeside Drive. That's a D F Y twenty-one dash zero one three. This is an erroneous description. Actually, this piece of land has not been abandoned. It is used every day of the year by our residents and others for recreational purposes. I believe the definition of abandonment is an unused asset. Therefore, this piece of land does not meet that definition. The motivation for this request is a maneuver by the Claremont Corporation to attempt to add a tiny piece of land to the lot where they want to build a restaurant, which is and has been unacceptable to our neighborhood. Please deny this request and maintain the present ownership of this not abandoned piece of land. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Miss Neri. Any other citizens? Oh, I have Melissa Re- Raymond, it looks like. Uh, Raymond Data.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Raymond Data, three seventeen Lakeside Drive. Um, thank you for, um, hearing my comment this evening. I would like to comment regarding the petition for dis- discontinuance of the abandoned portion of Lakeside Drive brought forth by Counselor Souza. Based upon the information provided, the portion of Lakeside Drive that is the subject of the petition crosses through the Lake Nippenica parking lot, lawn area, woods, and a perennial stream feeding into the lake. Excuse me. The perennial stream feeding into the lake, um, falls under the jurisdiction of the Massachusetts Rivers Protection Act. It extends through, um, the, the portion of, uh, Lakeside Drive. Uh, that's the subject of tonight extends through twenty-three Lakeside Drive, which is zoned in residential A B that according to the Bridgewater Mass assessor's database is a raised ranch located on a small lot that was purchased by the owner in two thousand eighteen and appears to have been vacant for some time. The remainder of the portion of Lakeside Drive that is the subject of the petition crosses through a number of wooded lots with the same owner. In twenty twenty, Claremont, the owner of the residential property and smaller lots requested a zoning change from residential A B to planned development district for the purpose of building a restaurant. It should be noted that Claremont owns Lakeshore Center across the street from one oh four. This was met by strong opposition by residents with a multitude of concerns, including threats to the lake and wildlife, as well as traffic and noise issues. The recent petition by Counselor Souza to discontinue the portion of Lakeside Drive that runs through the properties implies that Claremont may be revisiting the future use of the lakefront property and raises the same concerns expressed by residents back in twenty twenty. The statement in the petition, the portion of Lakeside Drive on which the Commonwealth Landfront is entirely paved over as a parking lot is not accurate. Lakeside Drive, as it is shown, crosses the parking lot, grassy area, woods, a perennial stream, as noted, that falls under the jurisdiction of the Massachusetts Rivers Protection Act and the residential property and surrounding woods. I would also question the use of the word abandoned as the parking lot and lakefront utilized constantly by the public. The proposed ordinance and petition indicates that town of Bridgewater owns the land that is the subject of the petition, and Mister Souza is actually proposing that the lakefront land should be transferred over to Claremont if the discontinuance petition is approved. The residents of the area have been very vocal in their opposition of plans by Claremont to develop the lakefront. However, this petition brought forth by the council representing this area clearly indicates that our concerns have not been heard.
Miss, yeah, interrupt, you're hitting a three-minute window, so I give you about okay, seconds to wrap up.
Yeah, I, uh, town of Bridgewater should have an interest to see that the lakefront remains protected from further development as it resides within an A C E C, the Hockamock Swamp. Uh, the town of Bridgewater has a great opportunity to step in here to preserve the land on the lake that could be utilized for the public good. I asked the councilors to oppose the petition for discontinuance of the abandoned portion of Lakeside Drive. Thank you for hearing my comments.
You, appreciate you coming out. Uh, Dr. Hunt, Carlton Hunt.
Good evening, good evening, councilors. Um, I have one quick request. I tried to find the minutes for the September meetings of the Town Council. Uh, they're not posted on the website, and I was looking up something with respect to the zoning down on Bedford Street for the Perkins property. Uh, wanted to make sure I didn't miss any meetings on that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that the order, the new, under your new business, the order for the imminent domain, uh, taking on Summer Street. Um, I encourage that to go forward. I think there's a lot of potential for a park, uh, there and adjoining the, uh, the little park that's next to that, that the B I A keeps up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Hunt. We have been a little short-staffed in town, as you're aware, and I know that we're a little bit behind. I'll personally get those, uh, meeting minutes to you late this evening. Uh, Miss Morrissey? If you are speaking, you're muted.
Okay, Bernice Morrissey, one fifty Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater, Mass. So I want to concur with my neighbors' comments earlier, and I just want to say, I logged in, um, very surprised at what I was reading. It seems a little vague with the hope set when this article about the ordinance or, uh, proposal to donate land to Claremont, um, I, I hope that I'm interested in all the discussion that's going to take place tonight, and I hope it will continue further because I agree, I objected to the term abandoned when land is crossed upon, and obviously, it's not abandoned when you have cars parking on the grass area of the boat ramp. Uh, and secondly, it's so restricted land for public access, and you know those law, laws are quite strong, so I'd be surprised if this floats at all. Um, it's also valued at sixty-one or whatever the assessed value is it. Um, I don't understand why we would be giving land, and I understand there is a benefit to the land, I mean, to what Claremont is trying to do. It's a benefit to the business, um, and yes, it will bring in tax revenue, but, um, given the restricted access, uh, the wetlands, the, the perennial stream, all of that, uh, like, all of that needs to be taken into consideration. Further, I just want to cite that Claremont purchased property from the state. But there are several passes, like, there are two that are on the map that shows it was transferred maybe in two thousand and eight. It paid a decent amount, so what's, why is this one going to be a freebie? And that's pretty much what I'm going to stay tuned in to get some answers to those questions and what my, uh, had made. So let you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I see Janet's iPad. Janet, if you are speaking, you're muted and just need your address.
Sorry, um, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I was gonna speak, um, on the same subject of the ordinance for Lakeside Drive, but, um, everybody else has covered a lot of it, so I don't want to repeat, but I just wanted to, um, say that, um, I totally agree with everybody's, um, comments so far, and I oppose, you know, having that changed. And I don't live on the lake, but I'm resident of, longtime resident of Bridgewater, and I totally agree with what everybody else has said. So I'd be interested to see how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Hanson. Um, next I see Amanda and Adam Parks.
Hi, Amanda and Adam Parks. My husband's here as well. Fifteen Bridle Road, um, down in that neighborhood. Um, I agree with everything that has been said by Pat, Melissa, and others. We also oppose it. The noise pollution is getting pretty severe over where we are. Um, nobody has mentioned, um, I know a lot of our neighbors aren't here tonight, but I know that they also still adamantly oppose the restaurant as well. Um, and we actually have bald eagles that are on that lake on a regular basis, and I don't know that was mentioned the last time we were in person when we disputed the restaurant, um, and so it's protected wildlife out here, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I do see, uh, Brian Hughes.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Mister Chairman, as the President should say, um, I'm actually the attorney for the Claremont Companies, the owner of.
Yeah, I don't want you speaking.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other citizens for citizens' open forum? Josh, I do not see anyone else. I assume Amanda and Bernice still have their hands raised from prior.
Yeah, I don't see anyone else either.
Okay, excellent. Moving on to E, appointments. First item is Historical Commission alternate member Jeffrey Miriam. I'll just refer to the Town Manager for any comments.
Uh, Mr. President, Jeff Merriman is, uh, very enthusiastic, relatively young, uh, new, relatively new, uh, resident of Bridgewater and, uh, very interested in history of wherever he lives and, and, uh, had a very good conversation with him, so I'd encourage the, uh, council to ratify his appointment.
Excellent, and a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote.
Mister George?
Yes.
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton? Mister Rushton? Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
I think Mister Rushton froze. I think we, uh, may need to allow him a moment to try to reconnect. He periodically has had recent, uh, issues with his.
I apologize. I apologize, Fred. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, where did we leave off? Was I the only one that got disconnected?
We're, we're at a motion to adjourn. No, I'm kidding.
Though we wish. Uh, so we were, um, going through a roll call vote on the Historical Commission, uh, member. Do we get through it?
Yes.
Except for your vote.
Okay.
Mister President.
That would be a yes.
Except for your vote. Okay, there we go.
Great. That's nine favors, zero against.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to hearings, we have none. Moving on to license transactions, we have none. Uh, moving on to presentations, we have none. Moving on to Town Manager's Report, first item up is the Mitchell School update, and before I defer, um, Vice President Chase, you can take over if I get bumped over again. I apologize for that.
All right, thank you.
All yours, Michael.
All right, thank you, Mister President. Uh, just on the Mitchell School, uh, building, that progress continues, uh, at a rapid clip. We are on schedule and, uh, and the work does continue, uh, as planned. Uh, the unsuitable soil issue, uh, there was, I was on a meeting today that, uh, will be resolved. There's a pending change order that, uh, requires a vote of the Building Committee, uh, at what will be a special meeting on Thursday. Um, it should be about a one hundred, uh, forty thousand dollar fix. Um, I think the change order will, will be asking for two hundred thousand, just in the event that there's more uh, there that, uh, that is not, uh, been uncovered yet, but that's what it should be. Um, and I know, excuse me, Counselor George, uh, and, and others are very anxious to understand how the road was built in the way that it was built, and, uh, we continue to look through all our records concerning that original road construction. Uh, back when that road was built, which was not that long ago, um, records, uh, meticulous records weren't kept as they are today, so, uh, so we, so far don't have inspection reports or anything of that nature, but we are turning over, uh, all the records, uh, within the Highway Department and other, other places to try to get, uh, a handle on exactly, uh, how that road was built and the way it was, so, so that, uh, that part is ongoing. Um, the, uh, as I mentioned, the timeline overall for the school is still good. The, uh, the road issue will not delay anything, um, at all. Uh, fortunately, but the timeline is still good with the project completion date of, uh, July of twenty twenty-two. Um, and as I mentioned, the next meeting is a special meeting, which will be on Thursday, just on the one item, the one change order item. After that, uh, we will, uh, post the, uh, November meeting, which would, uh, be, I believe, the third Monday. Um, the third Monday in, uh, November. So anybody wants more information, uh, BridgewaterSchoolProject.com, and you can find all the information, uh, in the world right there. So that's what I have on the Mitchell School, but happy to answer questions.
President?
Also, George.
Through you to the Town Manager. Uh, Mister Dutton, when was the, when was, when was the road built? How long ago?
Uh, we think, I believe it was built in conjunction, portion of the road was built in conjunction with the original Mitchell. Um, and the other portion of the road was built in conjunction with, um, the Senior Center and the, um, Conan Center, so not, not that long ago.
Which, which section is in question right now?
So the quest, there are two areas that have, uh, unsuitable soils. One is, um, roughly where the school piece connects in with the, um, back of the Senior Center, uh, and the other piece is slightly further to the east. Um, essentially where that sort of bend in the road is to the side of the Senior Center, if that makes sense.
Okay, so when, when were those portions? What year were they constructed?
Uh, we, we believe that those were constructed in the early nineties sometime. Uh, I don't have an exact date, though.
Okay, so it, to, for me to understand, we haven't been able to ascertain yet through records that you've looked at who exactly the contractor was who built the road. Am I, am I correct in that?
Exactly, and, and we haven't been able to ascertain who or whether those, uh, those portions of road were actually inspected, uh, as they would be if we were building them today.
Right, so, so that work would have had to been paid for by the town, correct?
Correct.
So how far do our financial records go back?
Uh, uh, good question. Um, they certainly go back that far. We can, it'll take a little digging, but we can access those, the financial records.
That, that would be my recommendation. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just be honest that, to continue this here, that we have record-keeping issues at various stages with various projects, and really, this only comes up when there are issues. Very, very, um, disappointing, but I think in this pers- perspective, I'll, I'll highly expect that if you can't find the records, we have financial records that have paid for that, and we should be able to identify who the general contractor was on, on that, and then we need to take next steps. Thank you very much.
Very well taken.
We have any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I just have a brief comment. Um, you know, obviously, I sit on the school building committee, and I understand the frustration that you have, Counselor George. I, I just, it's a very fast and rapid-evolving project in with everything's going on. I, I, I'm not sure, even with the due diligence work that you're asking for to track down, you know, who might have laid base on a roadway over twenty years ago, that, understanding from the contractor, seems to be a lot of what he described as a possible old log road deep under the base of the roadway. I, I'm just not sure it's worth our efforts. Um, it's gonna end up being a fruitless task, um, that bears nothing. I mean, we've already dealt with the contractor. We've been able to recoup nothing. I, I would just, I would just caution the amount of time that we're spending trying to track this down, although I appreciate the frustration. I just don't know if it's worth going down the rabbit hole. But that.
Uh, President, President Rushton, uh, sure, uh, question, uh, to the Town Attorney through you.
Sure.
Mister, Mister Rollins, if we were able to ascertain who the general contractor was, we're also to ascertain that the work was not done to the standards of what needed to be done at the time, does the town have a possibility for recourse?
Potentially, depending on a couple of things. Number one, if it's deemed after our analysis that that kind of work was either a breach of their contract or negligent. And number two, when we knew or should have known, uh, about that negligence. So if we knew or should have known about that negligence some time ago, it's conceivable the statute of limitations has run. So really, it's, it's heavily fact-specific. Um, and I really couldn't answer it until we have those facts, but those, those are the facts you have to ascertain. Number one, was there negligence in the way the road was constructed? Or was there a breach of contract? And number two, when did we know or should have we known about that negligence or breach? Um, and the statutes of limitations are different for contract and for tort, uh, or negligence, so. Um, and then there's a whole nother element of negligence that i- if it's based not on an injury that's occurred, it's, it's more difficult to ascertain, but you can go down that rabbit hole, but I think the important question is really, was there some issue with how it was built? Was there a breach of the contract with how it was built? And when did we know about that? And those are the questions. Once we have those questions answered, I could give you a more thorough, specific answer.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, President Rushton, but I think, um, you know, for all of us, including yourself, that have been here for a long time, this whole project's been riddled with issues, both from the old Mitchell School, now we're finding about, you know, street access, and even though it may be yeoman's task, I think it's our responsibility for the taxpayers to look at every avenue, try to recoup any damages that we possibly could have. That's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
No, and I truly appreciate that, and I will send you, um, all of the meeting documents from a Monday night's meeting that's opening in this special meeting on Thursday to allocate around a hundred sixty-five thousand to make the repairs, but if I understand it correctly, the road surface really wasn't at issue here. It was a broken sewer line, and once they ripped up the roadway and got down to the sewer line, they realized the base at that level, um, was directly caused the sewer break, and so in order to repave or resurface that area, the current contractor recognizes that that type of material should be removed and was probably responsible for the sewer line break. I don't know that we suffered any damage other than, you know, we'll have to call this material and obviously this cost, but I, I appreciate that. I'll send it to you if you want to take a look at it. Just a brief comment. I'll move on from that. Uh, next item up is COVID nineteen update.
Uh, thank you, Miss President. COVID nineteen update. Our numbers are up a little bit. We have, uh, now have twenty-four, uh, reported active positive cases. Uh, that's eighteen adults and six children. Um, our vaccination rate, for those that track it, is, uh, very incrementally higher. It's, I think, one percent over what it was two weeks ago. It's fifty-six percent uh, of our Bridgewater residents are, uh, fully vaccinated. Sixty-two percent have at least one, uh, one vaccine shot, so. So that is, uh, that is that. Uh, just, just as an aside, we're attentive to the fact that, uh, the building, uh, November first is Quarterly Tax Payment Day, and, and we will be asking people to, uh, be very careful, uh, both staff and visitors to the building.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt? Counselor Colin Bodis, thank you. I apologize.
No, that's fine. Um, we will, uh, encourage, we always encourage people to use the payment box, which is on the, uh, Bedford str- uh, side of the building, uh, right, uh, right up next to the building, uh, or use the mail or use our online payment center if you, uh, feel uncomfortable coming into a municipal, municipal building to, uh, to pay your taxes, but, uh, but certainly we'll do as much as possible when the time comes to try to, uh, alleviate people's concerns um, when that happens, but that's what I have for COVID. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, I just had one quick follow-up. Um, if online payments is an option due to the building being either closed or restricted access, access or mask policies, um, do we waive any type of fees if somebody is forced to pay online?
If, uh, if we ran into a situation where people really were not permitted in the building period, um, at this point, we probably, uh, could arrange something along those lines. Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Uh, next item is Status of dwell eighty-five.
Dwell eighty-five, there are two separate items here that I, I just wanted to address very quickly, uh, this evening, and, uh, the second one, I really can't go into too much detail. Um, because it's sort of a matter of litigation, um, and certainly I will leave open the possibility, if, if the counselors have questions on, on the second piece of, uh, of my report, then, then we can schedule, uh, a conversation in executive session about that, but. Um, the first piece, um, I think several counselors had reached out and asked about, um, what was going on down there specifically. I think there was a, uh, uh, either a police department tweet or something of that nature indicating that, uh, that a caller had reported a, quote, gang fight. Um, the police record does show, I, I do have that, and it, and, uh, Police Department has filled me in on that. Uh, somebody called it in and referred to it as a gang fight. It was not. It was a congregation of, of, uh, people, mostly students. Um, and, uh, Police Department arrived and everybody was, was properly dispersed. The broader question really, or the broader issue as, as it relates to dwell eighty-five is really the number of calls uh, for police and fire service that have come from that location. Um, and I can tell you, uh, based on information I received today, that, uh, the, the building owner has hired a new management team and is also, uh, in the process or has, uh, hired a security firm um, in order to, uh, provide security at that location. So that's, that, uh, providing building security is not the job of Bridgewater P D. Um, it, uh, is the responsibility of the owner to maintain, uh, control of, of, of their, uh, location, so, um. the other piece on that and and just so the council knows and so the public knows, Bridgewater PD and and Bridgewater State Police Department uh have a pretty good relationship when it comes to uh issues involving students off campus, and the Bridgewater PD will share uh information on those incidents. Uh, if they involve uh BSU students, we'll share that information with the Bridgewater State PD. Um, so that uh Bridgewater State is is well informed uh on on what their students are doing. So, so that's, that is the first piece. Um, the first piece of of that. Uh, the second issue, which is the one I really, I'll be very brief about because there's not a whole lot I really can say um a lot of detail that I can give you. But as the council knows, we we have issued a cease and desist order. The building inspector issued a cease and desist order uh under our local lodging house uh ordinance. The ZBA upheld the building inspector's cease and desist um issuance. Uh, the owner of the property is now appealed to Superior Court. And that is where that legal process now stands, um and I will leave it at that. Um, and uh and again, if if counselors have questions about that, feel free to reach out. We can schedule an executive session for to get into more detail. But but uh in terms of the of the police response to uh to uh dwell eighty-five, I believe it's called, um, I'm happy to answer questions about about that, that part.
Hey, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Galaga.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mike, um, do you have like, when did dwell eighty-five open? For like when, when were they starting to get residents or not residents, but when did they start leasing out their units?
I think, no, good question. I think they started leasing out the units um probably about eight months ago. Um, they actually uh received their certificate of occupancy uh so people could move in. Uh, I believe it was August uh mid to uh end of August.
And and they had a management company hired eight months ago, and now they're already getting a new one in eight months? That's not a good sign. That's not a good sign. But I don't, I guess my second question is, it hasn't been a lot of our police department responding to that place? Have there been a new uh? Yeah, are there a lot of calls that our our police department has to respond?
Uh, there have been, I will tell you, there have been more than we uh we would like. Um, I haven't, I've got the reports in front of me, but I haven't uh, I haven't uh qualified or quantified them. Um, a lot of the uh responses are due to the fire alarm, which is not uncommon in uh newly populated buildings. You know, we had the same issue with some of the buildings out um out at the Claremont property. Um, so the fire alarm calls have been um have have far outnumbered the uh police calls, I can tell you that. Um, but I would, I would say uh the the police department is uh there probably on average uh several times a week. Mostly for uh for noise complaints.
Yeah. All right, it's not a, thank you very much. It's not a good sign. It's not a good sign at the moment. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, see, and none, I guess I'll just briefly comment. Um, I I think it might be appropriate for the council in one of our next uh future meetings to have an executive session on this issue since to the town manager's point uh in litigation. The issue for me is that the website for dwell eighty-five was established in November of two thousand nineteen. I've been asking questions since November of two thousand nineteen about how a project such as this was able to go through the permitting process, have all their rough permits, all their finished permits. And as we just heard, the occupancy permit was issued in August. You look at the website, I'm going to give you a description so everybody's clear. Brand new premier off-campus student living opening this June. That's their advertisement. Tell me how this happened. We have units there with six people living in them, yet we have a restriction. So if you grew up in Bridgewater, you purchase property in Bridgewater, you're restricted from having more than three people that don't, that are not related, living together. So we have private people in this town who have invested in this town. They can't do what dwell eighty-five is doing right now. They're also not causing the problems that dwell eighty-five is causing for the town right now. I just don't get it. How did we issue an occupancy permit if we knew this was happening? We signed off on it, but why are we in litigation? These are questions that need to be answered.
I could probably likely answer most of those, but I think it's probably appropriate for an executive session. Um, because we are right in the middle of litigation. We actually have counterclaims against dwell eighty-five. And I'm certainly not going to want to discuss litigation strategy in an open meeting. So um, you know, we we can absolutely talk about that. I tend to agree with you that um, their Bridgewater doesn't allow lodging houses. So we do not allow people to occupy a premises or three or more, four or more people to occupy a premises if they are beyond the second degree of kindred of the legal owner. And we are enforcing that. So I I can tell you that um without going into any litigation uh strategy or where we're at, we are absolutely enforcing that, and we are absolutely taking that position. And we are taking that position both prior to litigation and in litigation. So um, I think there's a lot more to this than meets the eye. Um, and I think unfortunately, while it's it's good consumption for the public, um as a lawyer, it's not good consumption to throw out litigation strategy in an open meeting. So um I I would prefer to talk about in an executive session, and certainly I can answer any and all questions counselors have about it.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I think that's what I was suggestion uh suggested. So I I would it be helpful if we had specific questions that we sent to you in advance of a executive session meeting on this issue?
No, I I I feel comfortable enough. I have a good enough background on it now. I mean, I filed the answer at least. Uh, so I know all the facts pretty well. I mean, if there's something I can't answer, we can always follow up again, but I feel pretty comfortable answering any questions you guys have.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, did not see any. Okay, so moving on, uh next item is discussions. We have none. Next item is committee reports. Any committees wishing to report?
Mister President.
Council Chase.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, I am very pleased to report uh as chairman of the ad hoc committee, uh the search committee for a new town council clerk that, in fact, an offer has been made and um uh accepted by a candidate, uh which has just happened in um in recent days. Um, and the candidate uh I can name for you and announce today because she has accepted the position and um, her name is Deborah Ward. And uh Ms. Ward uh has previously been the town council clerk for the town of Randolph uh for uh for several years. And uh I think it should go without saying that um based upon the comments that the interviewer was received in response to our questions, it was readily apparent that uh Ms. Ward is eminently qualified for the position and very enthusiastic about it. Uh, so my expectation is that uh a start date for uh Ms. Ward is November fifteenth. I I think I'm being advised. And um at some point in the near future, I'm hoping that we can arrange for an appropriate forum for uh the counselors to uh who have not already meet uh met with uh Ms. Ward to uh introduce themselves and uh and to get to know her a little better. Um, uh, once again, I think it's a a tremendous development for us uh as a council. I think that it's, it's no overstatement to say that um we would, we would not necessarily have expected so qualified a candidate to emerge, and we're indeed very fortunate. And just a final note, if I may, um, I'd like to express thanks and congratulations to the candidate. Uh, and uh as well, thanks to uh Kimberly Williams, the assistant town manager who um provided uh tremendous assistance throughout this search process. And as well to uh yourself, Mister President, uh along with uh Ann Holmberg. Uh, both of you have served as interviewers along with myself. And of course, uh to our fellow counselors, uh for Consulor Souza and Consulor George, who comprise the uh ad hoc committee along with myself. And all of you have devoted a great amount of time and uh attention to this matter. I think it's come to a a very successful conclusion, and I'm, I'm thrilled to be able to make that report to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chase. Uh, Counsel Wood.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to report on the budget finance uh committee.
Counsel Wood, Counsel Wood, I was just looking for comments first on Counsel Chase's uh committee report first. I apologize. I thought you had a comment. Any comments for uh Counsel Chase? Okay, see, and none, I would just uh echo the sentiments of Counsel Chase and certainly thank you for your work, Counsel Chase, on the numerous emails in getting to this uh point. I think we have a really strong candidate, and we're very lucky um to have really grabbed this candidate uh for this position. So I appreciate all your time, effort, and energy, as well as the other members of the ad hoc committee. Uh, with that said, uh Counsel Wood, I'm going to defer to Counsel Souza because he actually had you beat on committee reports. I apologize. Counsel Souza.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, committee report, new rules and procedures committee looking over the charter. Um, we don't want people to think that we're not doing anything about it. We have spent quite a bit of time reviewing it and sometimes discussing it. But all three have come to a conclusion that we definitely need some legal guidance. And so our next meeting that we will be having, we're hoping to either the town uh attorney or another attorney could be with us to uh finish up that review and get it back to the council.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, Counsel Souza?
I would say just let me know in advance, Counselor Souza, and then we can figure out a date that works for the committee as well as me.
Thank you.
I I also would think Counsel Souza that uh we should have regular committee updates uh from this point forward till we're done with this project. Uh, to your point, uh so critical to timelines and whatnot. Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you. Counsel Wood.
Thank you. Um, the budget and finance uh committee met tonight to discuss um two items that are on our agenda fourteen, which is the adoption of the Plymouth County OPEB trust uh program for the town. And that was a recommendation to uh from the committee for uh passage by the council three zero. And then on the um, on fifteen, the uh general free cash allocation to trust funds, again, a recommendation to approve three zero from the from the committee. I'd like to point out, um, President Rushton, that uh Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien and his team are here in case we have any questions about the OPEB uh trust fund.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Counsel Wood? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to legislation for action. First item, uh little A ordinance, D F Y twenty-one zero eleven, general ordinance amend article to section two dash one, composition eligibility term of office. At their meeting held on ten twelve twenty twenty-one, the rules and procedures committee voted to recommend approval as amended. This measure may not be considered this evening as it requires advertising, so I'm just going to defer to Jason uh with a note whether or not we can vote to send this to advertising.
I think what, as we discussed, I know Mary Lee um was involved in the special uh meeting that we had. What I would be recommending is you all keep uh pressing forward on the map. Once you vote the map, um, you vote uh on any amendments you want to make to this. Um, so I, what I would do is I'd probably continue it at the council level, and then once the map is voted, uh you all can debate the amendments relative to the the map that's voted. Um, and hopefully that'll be corresponding, your process will be corresponding with uh our process getting it approved by the LEDRC uh at the state. And then when it comes back approved by them, your process will also be done, and we can send that off to the state house. So that that would be my suggestion, that you keep it at the council level. You all, uh, once the map is voted, you all then debate how you want uh charter changes to read relative to the map that you vote.
Okay, excellent. So we can just uh to a date certain on this site, on this uh agenda item?
Yeah, I would just keep it me, I mean, you you could even vote it to the next meeting, just so we keep it on everyone, front of everyone's minds. And um make sure that we also keep the map moving, because that's the one we want to make sure we get voted quickly so that we can get it to the LEDRC.
Okay, so moving to the next uh meeting, just to help me out procedurally, um, we're going to make uh someone's entertain a motion to move to our next, this item to our next meeting?
Yeah, just make a motion to continue to whatever date the next, I don't have it in front of me that the actual date certain, but I think it's maybe November fourth, correct? And then have someone second it, and then that's fine.
Okay, excellent. And we could do that on the second one, uh zero twelve as well. Okay, uh so we have a motion on the floor, do we, and we have a second? Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Counsel Wood.
Yeah, just, um, you know, it might be worthwhile, President Rushton, to have another workshop between now and then, if we can squeeze it in. Have a a more general discussion be before we get into the nuts and bolts of the order. Once, once we've decided on the map structure. And uh that I know there's a lot of topics related to this, so I was just hoping that maybe as part of this process, we could do a a short workshop as well.
Absolutely. Think it was very productive. We'll do the the other one. No problem. Uh, Counsel Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew the version uh that we see in front of us does show uh changes. Uh, but those changes were made prior to the current discussion. So as people are considering this, uh to Counsel Wood's point, I think there probably does need to be some more discussion before the final change.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well.
Counsel Galaga.
Should this go back, does it need to go back to rules and procedures, or can we keep it here and?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you could do one of two things. I mean, I was thinking, keep it here just so that, you know, it's already here. Um, but if you think it's a useful exercise to vote it back, you certainly could do that as well. Um, I I just thought you all wanted to keep it up at this level so that you can vote on the amendments up here quickly. Um, I'm also going to suggest, once we get the map, um, those other things that may need to be changed in the charter, we may need to start bringing forward quickly thereafter as well. Because these are a couple of things, but if you recall, when Mary Lee actually um did one of her presentations, she had mentioned some other items in the charter that need to correspond with this. Um, so I just want to make sure we have time to get it all, you know, done. So eh either way, I think we're fine as long as the rules and procedures votes it back to the next council meeting quickly thereafter. Or you leave it at council level and have all the amendment debates up here. I mean, I, it's fine.
Right, because it really what needs to be plugged in here are numbers.
Exactly.
So if we plug them in at the council level, that's so suffice to keep it here. It's not a significant enough change to send it back. Is that correct?
I I don't, I don't think you need to send it back on that premise, because all the, it's been advertised uh in terms of the initial um ordinances. And everything that gets voted from here on out, it did go through committee. Committee just voted to get it back up to council level, right? So you all can make the decisions at council level. Committee doesn't have to recommend them or not recommend them.
Very good. Thank you.
Counsel George.
Um, uh, and I'll, I'll call on my other members of rules and procedures. I'm a little perplexed on the order, because I believe at our meeting, we voted no opinion with no numbers included in the or the ordinance. And this one has it a two oh vote in favor of the changes that are in it. So I think we're going to need to look at that. I don't believe that was the case, but I I could be wrong. I I don't know if Counsel Souza or Counsel Moore has anything to add to that.
Counsel Moore.
Yeah, I think I can help clarify. This, this ordinance has come in front of the rules and procedures twice. The first time it came in front of rules and procedures, uh there was, it was just Counsel Souza. The first time it came in front of Rules and Procedures, there was, it was just Counsel Souza and I. And these changes were made. It was voted back to council and then council sent it back. The most recent meeting didn't include the current version and included an older one. So there was some discussion where we voted three to zero, essentially in favor, to send it back to council. But the, the version that we were looking at in the meeting, I believe, was outdated. So this is the current meeting, or this is the current version. I think, as I look at this, I think there is a disconnect on the vote. I don't know if that helps.
No, I mean, it actually doesn't, and don't take this the wrong way, but now I'm a little confused that we did have an ordinance in front of us. This is being, looking at the agenda presented as if their meeting held on October twelve twenty twenty one. That was the meeting that we voted three oh with no recommendation. So I think we need to clarify exactly what it is that we're looking at for the next meeting, because I'm very confused on it.
Well, if that's the issue, and there's an issue that happened at committee, and you're not sure that you actually voted the proper ordinance or were not making a recommendation on the proper ordinance, it may make sense, as Mr. Gallagher was saying, to maybe send it back to you all. Because I, what I do want, I have no issue with you guys debating and amending at council level. But I want to make sure that what came out of committee is truly what came out of committee, right? So it may make sense to go back, make sure the right thing comes out of committee, have it on the agenda. Then you vote it back up to council level for the next agenda and we go from there. Does that, does that all make sense?
Right, and it may, it may be an issue where the note on the agenda is incorrect, which, you know, to Counsel Moore's point, there was a vote on a meeting that I didn't attend, which is fine. I just want to make sure that this is clean, that's all.
I agree. So maybe you all just vote both those back to Rules and Procedures. Rules and Procedures have a quick meeting, turning it around with the proper one coming back to council level as quickly as possible. And do it that way.
Counsel Wood.
Yeah, and while I don't agree with the Attorney Rollins and the procedural piece, I think if we have a workshop in between the two pieces, where we're not voting, but coming up with a consensus to what language we might desire, that we would have the same net effect, sending back to committee. And then back and making the amendments at the council level. That's without hope anyway.
Yeah, you, you have the same net effect at the end of the day on all of this. That my point, my point to you is that the thing that is before the council now, the recommendation that's before the council now, is unknown to the council, right? You don't know, the Rules and Procedures Committee at this point isn't sure what they recommended or deferred to recommend, right? So I was just talking about cleaning that part of it, up of it. Other than that, you're right, you can amend it at council level. I have no issue with that.
Well, we're starting with whatever we had as first reading anyway.
Correct.
Regardless of what the committee did, because it's still just a recommendation to.
It is a recommendation, that's right.
Right. I just want to make sure as a group here, that we have an opportunity in the workshop model to have a more open discussion. Once we get past the map item.
Sure.
Discuss the overall structure.
It's, it's.
That's my concern.
Yeah, it, it all comes down to proper form. So proper form is to make sure that the thing that came out of committee is the right thing, right? Can you vote at council level on whatever was recommended or not recommended? Absolutely. So I don't disagree with you, Mr. Wood. I just, there's a proper, you know, formal procedure for it, that's all.
Yeah, and certainly listening to the conversation, I, I tend to lean towards Counsel Wood, that it would make more sense rather than sending back to Rules Procedure for a discussion, bringing back to the council, that the council commits to another workshop where there's an open discussion on this issue. And it's amended and stays at the council level for the next meeting, if that makes sense to everyone.
If I could, one.
Sure. Counsel Gallagher.
Now, I agree. I think, I think if, I don't think it needs to go back to Rules and Procedures now. It seems to me that it, what's in front of us is what the committee voted two to oh, two to zero on the, at the timeframe that Counsel George is not able to make the meeting. So it looks as though the only discrepancy is the date. That vote wasn't taken on October twelfth, it was taken whenever that vote was taken. So I think it should be, keep it at our level. We'll have a workshop, we'll iron it out. That's what I think.
Okay, we have a second, and we've had discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, move for roll call vote.
President Rushden, what are we voting on?
To move this to the next council meeting.
Okay.
November second, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will, will there be time for a workshop in between, or will that?
Yes, there will. Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against. Okay, moving on. Item B, Ordinance D F Y twenty one dash zero one two, General Ordinance Admin Code Change Part Two, Chapter One, Article Two, Section Two. At their meeting held on ten twelve twenty twenty one, the Rules and Procedures Committee voted to recommend approval as amended. This measure may not be considered this evening as it requires advertising. So same thing, probably entertain a motion to move this to our next council meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for roll call vote. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against. Thank you. Moving on. Item C, Order Zero F Y twenty two dash zero one four, the adoption of the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund, P C O T, town, excuse me, at the Budget and Finance Committee met on ten nineteen twenty twenty one. Their disposition was, as we heard earlier, approved. And this Finance Committee voted to recommend approval at their meeting held on ten thirteen twenty one. This measure may be finally considered this evening upon receipt. I will defer to the Town Manager.
Mr. President, this, this is an opportunity for us to join a larger pool of money as part of our effort to fund our other post-employment benefit liability amounts. And I think as the council knows, that OPEB figure, our outstanding liability runs in the multiple of millions of dollars. We have done about as good a job as most communities have in setting aside funds. We don't have the investment expertise or the invest, the investment abilities that a vehicle such as the Plymouth County Peacock, for short. And so Finance Director Solomonti and I both recommend that, that we become part of the Peacock Trust and that, that we shift our current, our current, the monies that we've currently appropriated toward, toward that, that liability into the Plymouth County Trust. And if the president so inclines, Treasurer O'Brien is here and he can certainly shed some additional light on that if the council wishes.
Yeah, I certainly think it makes sense. He's taken the time to join us this evening. And I think it's important for the residents to understand the benefit that we'll see as a community joining this fund. So, Mr. O'Brien, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know we're on a time crunch. I hear there's something happening at eight oh eight today, so I don't want to belabor the point. And I also really appreciate the work of the Finance Committee, which approved us unanimously. And then the Budget and Finance Committee approving it today. What we've tried to do is create a product that, as your Town Manager reported, will give you access to some administrative support through PARZ, and I have Kate Candy from my team on the call here. And then investment advice and strategy through U S Bank, and we have Dennis Mullins on the call as well. We've assembled the top-notch team. Our goals are simple, excellent returns, better service at a lower cost. We've been able to do that over the last five years. We think it's a perfect fit for the town of Bridgewater. I really appreciate the time that Mike Dutton spent meeting with us and reviewing the product. And Tony Solomonti as well. We feel that they've certainly done their homework. I could talk about this topic, for those that know me for a long time. But again, given the agenda and given the unanimous support, I don't want to belabor the issue. If there are questions, myself and the team are happy to answer them.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien.
You're welcome, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against. Okay, next item, Order Zero F Y twenty two dash zero one five, General Fund Free Cash Allocation to Trust Funds. The Budget and Finance Committee met on ten nineteen. This disposition was provided tonight unanimously. The Finance Committee voted to recommend approval at their meeting held on ten thirteen twenty one. This measure may be finally considered this evening upon receipt. Motion to approve.
So moved to approve. Second?
Okay, move for a roll call vote. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against. Okay, moving on. New business, old business, we have none. Next is new business. Item A, Ordinance D F Y twenty two dash zero one three, Discontinence of the Abandoned Portion of Lakeside Drive. I will defer to Counsel Souza for next question.
Okay, the attorney for Claremont Companies asked me to submit this. I went over in depth with them. We saw that, you know, the road has not been used for many, many years. There was a fence at the end of it where it goes on to the main road, one oh four. So no one can use it if they wanted to. Part of it goes through the boat ramp parking lot. And it, it kind of puts some liability in there on the town when the state owns the rest of it. So they're looking to, their land is split in two, and they're just looking to get that portion between that to bring their piece of property into one piece of property, one instead of two pieces of property divided by some road that has not been used for many, many years. And that is what's here for you today. And, you know, if anyone else has any comments, we'll hear from them.
Okay, I think what we would do is entertain a motion to send to the Community Economic Development and Planning Board. And then if we get a second, we'll open up for discussion. Second, Counsel Wood. Okay, any discussion?
I have a question.
Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to probably the Town Manager, and I, I guess, despite the, the issues that were brought up in open forum, and I weigh those concerns heavily. But before, before that, I guess my question really is, is procedure, whenever we have a, a business that wants to develop or put something forward to the town, I, I would think that they would reach out to your office or the Economic Development Office like we did with the Perkins Foundry land. When we met with them, Jennifer Burke was there and she was, she was looking for a sponsor to change the zoning. Obviously, she, you could have put it in as Town Manager, or she was looking for a counselor to do that. So I sponsored that ordinance to put in to change the zoning, so they could move to the next step for their project. I, I guess, I'm more concerned about the process. Nothing against Counsel Souza. I think he, he said in the beginning that he was putting this forward at the request of an attorney for the developer, which is, I guess, is okay. But I would think a request like this might come through your office, Mr. Dunn. I don't know if, if there's any communication between them and, and working with them. But I, I think that, I guess that's my concern here, is has, has the Economic and Development Office been involved with this at all?
I, I know that Jennifer has been, had discussions with representatives of Claremont about, about this, you know, discontinuance of a, of a way. And I don't know the extent of those conversations, so I can't really speak to that. But that's, that's about all I know. I have not, I have not had any kind of extensive conversations after the last, the last, I think, the proposal for the restaurant that had come to, I believe, the Planning Board. So, so I haven't had any, any substantial conversation with them, other than I know that they would like to discontinue that way. Obviously, any property owner that owns property on both sides, I would think would want to do the same. If, if in fact, it was a, a, a way that, that was not used and was not going to be used. But, but that's about the input that I have there.
Okay.
Counsel Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think as we all know, the Planning Board and the Community and Economic Development Committee of the Council some eighteen months or so ago, did give very serious and in-depth consideration to what was then the restaurant proposal. And that was met with a, quite a significant degree of opposition from the community, particularly, of course, from the residents in the Lake Shore Drive area. Now, based upon what's been presented to us in this petition, we don't know what is the ultimate proposal that the business interests have in the use of this land. But it's, it's rather suspiciously opaque. We have no transparency into this. We, we don't know. And quite frankly, that's concerning to me, because I think it's very difficult to not conclude that this is a mechanism by which they will attempt to achieve the same result through a different means, not requiring a zoning change. So with that said, it will be up to the Community and Economic Development Committee, and perhaps the Planning Board as well, to come to some determination. And I think important points have been raised with respect to environmental issues on that land. And I wouldn't be surprised to see that any change in the use of that land would require issuance of a certificate of conditions from the Conservation Commission. So there's really quite a bit of work ahead. But frankly, I, I, I think it's, I think it's really a shame that there's a, a lack of transparency at this point, as to what is the intended ultimate use of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wood.
Question to the Town Manager, actually. Is, is this similar to what we did on High Street a couple of years ago, where there was a, a street cutting off the corner? And we declared it as an abandoned portion, so that the town no longer had any, any say or way onto the, onto the road itself? Cut off the corner of High Street?
Yeah, I think unfortunately, that was, I think that predates me. But it, but from what you're describing, and the little I know, it is a similar, it's a similar process, correct?
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Moore.
I think similar to Counsel Chase, you know, I'm, I'm confused by the language of the request. And I'm, I'm struggling to actually understand what is, what is being proposed. There are two alternate images of the space. One is significantly outdated. There's a declaration that it's obsolete, but if you drive down there, there are trucks that park in that parking lot. So I would ask, if this is something that we want to push forward, you know, I would like to see us maybe go through the language a little bit in the request and, and really clarify what the ask is. And I think at the same time, try to remove all of the language that says, you know, it appears that this was originally the intent of the town. It appears that X, Y and Z, that it's, it's just very fuzzy language. And I think if we do want to push it forward, I'd like to see it be more crisp. uh, if we do want to push it forward, I'd like to see it, uh, be more crisp in the request. Thanks.
Okay, so we have any other comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor, um, to send to the Community Economic Development and Planning Board, uh, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, next item B, Ordinance D F Y twenty-two dash zero one four, Adoption of a Precinct Map. Counselors Moore, Gallagher, and Wood. So it looks like, uh, entertain a motion to send this to advertisement.
So moved.
Second. Did I hear a second and miss it?
Yes, second.
Counselor Moore. Okay, and so I'll defer to, uh, Counselor Moore if you'd like.
Sure. So this is a, a follow-up to our last discussion, uh, where as a group, we agreed that nine precincts, uh, seem to be the best choice, uh, given the population growth of Bridgewater. Uh, this is an attempt to formalize that, that decision uh, and create a map of Bridgewater with nine precincts, each, uh, with, uh, as close to equal population as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, Counselor Wood?
So I, I just want to give a, a last minute, um, chance for anyone that uh, wants to decide otherwise, but there is the possibility of doing twelve precincts. And, um, the, the data is there, the, the split is there. Um, we heard from the, the town clerk, you know, that about the increased costs, which, which are, you know, is a valid argument. Um, but the other side of the argument, setting aside the election cost, is that we could retain, um, you know, six, six districts, um, in, in that, in that model. And I just want to be sure there's no one left at the table here that has any desire to do that before we move forward with the, uh, nine, the nine precinct model. I hear none. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Wood. Any other comments? Okay, see, and then I'll move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, next item C, Resolution R F Y twenty-two dash zero zero two, F Y twenty-three Budget Res- Resolution. Entertain a motion to refer to the Budget Finance and Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I'll just explain where the starting point is. As I've done for, for several years now, you know, October is kind of the, uh, Budget Resolution Month. Um, you saw in an email earlier today that, uh, the Finance Department has a timeline of, of the budget process. Um, and so the budget always starts with this resolution, which indicates to the town manager and the Finance Department what they have as a framework to work with for the budget. Um, the starting point for this one, as, as has been the, in the past, um, we simply updated the dates. Um, it's the final product that was approved last year. The, I anticipate that the Finance Committee and the Budget Finance Committee may make changes to this, uh, for, uh, you know, recommended amendments. But the starting, starting product here is the finished product from last year. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, um, going forward. Uh, that's it. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, uh, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, moving on. Item D, Resolution R F Y twenty-two dash zero zero three, Clear Title to the Town Common. Uh, entertain a motion to refer to the Community and the Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Counselor Wood.
Thank you. Um, this is part of the, the work that I think that needs to be done before we start any major revision downtown. Um, for those of you that know my father, he has studied, um, studied, uh, deeds going back into the, you know, beginning of Bridgewater. And the, and the town common is one of those areas that does not have clear deed, um, all the way through. So I thought it was important before we started in on any downtown revitalization where we talk about shifting lanes or moving things, that the town actually show its ownership of the property it intends to change. Um, and I think this is the vehicle to do it. Thanks.
Excellent. Any discussion or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
You're muted.
You're on mute.
My apologies. Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Next item E, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero one six, Capital Appropriation Middle, uh, Memorial Building Project. Uh, motion entertained to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second. Okay, defer to the town manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we, as the council knows, went out to bid on the, uh, project, on the Memorial Building Renovation Project. Um, our most recent, uh, construction cost estimate, um, was one million four twenty-three. The bids came in, the low bid, the, came in at one, uh, point seven, uh, million dollars. We have already appropriated for the total project, we've appropriated a million five fifty-one. And, uh, and so we, uh, need to appropriate additional funds. We knew we would have to do this. Um, we would go into the CPC and, uh, and they had acknowledged that, uh, when they granted three fifty for the project, that, that we would likely be coming back for an additional sum of money. At the time, we thought that would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. Um, our current balance in the capital, uh, account is about a million four fifty. We are seeking, uh, the additional four hundred to get the project done, uh, properly. And, uh, and we will also provide, uh, within that, uh, amount of very healthy contingency for any unforeseen construction issues. Um, and as I always say, on capital projects and, and funding of capital projects, any funding not used, uh, goes back to the source, uh, from which it came. And I think on just about every project we've done, we've returned the money, um, to the source from which it came. So that's brief explanation of that one.
Excellent. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Moving on, Item F, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero one seven, Transfer Order, Old Scotland Links Golf Course Pump, uh, motion to, entertain a motion to, uh, Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, uh, the pump, this is the primary irrigation pump for the entire course. It is, uh, over twenty-five years old and is requiring constant maintenance. It, uh, has gone beyond its life expectancy by probably, uh, five to seven years. We have gone out to bid and we reduced our original, uh, estimate, uh, by about twenty thousand dollars. Um, so we have a bid for one seventeen and change. And so, uh, this, uh, order is looking to transfer from retained earnings, uh, in order to pay for that pump.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, see, and none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Next item G, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero one eight, Plymouth American Rescue Act Votes. Entertain a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I apologize. I defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this, uh, this is a piece of legislation that, uh, Plymouth County is asking for, uh, just to allow us, oh, I should back up. I apologize. Uh, the ARPA funds, um, American Rescue Plan Act funds come to us in a couple of different ways, perhaps more when it's all said and done. Um, one way is directly, uh, from the federal government. The other way is, is indirectly through Plymouth County. Um, Plymouth County, uh, in order for us to access the funds that, that are earmarked for us, uh, requires that, that, uh, that we interact with them through a portal. Um, and before they give us access to that portal, uh, they're asking for evidence of town uh, authorization. Obviously, they want to make sure that whoever the council is authorized is the one that's, uh, accessing their, their, uh, online portal. So essentially, that's what this, uh, this is a request to do.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing that move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, next item, H, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero one nine, eminent domain order of taking for Summer Street property. Uh, entertain a motion to refer to the Community Economic Development Committee.
So moved. Second.
Okay, uh, defer to Counselor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, this is for us to, to acquire by eminent domain, uh, property, which is usually called the Coliseum Mobile, that has been abandoned and a blight, um, to the town for, I would say, well over fifteen years. And uh, our intent is to acquire it, clean it up, and, and look at the potentially developing parkland, um, for, you know, the residents of Bridgewater, it be of people that live in the downtown area or anyone else, even visitors that would like to come, uh, and relax. So this is the first step in acquiring the property.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carlos?
Um, I'd like to recuse myself from this, given that my primary residence is within a hundred feet of the subject property.
Understood.
So I'll leave the, if, I'll leave the meeting, and if someone could text me to tell me to come back on.
Understood.
I can actually put you in the, um,
Waiting room?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, he's there.
Okay, I lost everyone. Okay, there we go. Any other, uh, excuse me, questions or comments, Counselor George? Seeing none, I would just, uh, thank, thank you, Counselor George, for finally putting this together and getting the wheels in motion to, to see this property cleaned up. I certainly appreciate it. Uh, with that, uh, we will call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Okay, before I move on, I'll wait for you to bring Counselor Colin Bodis back in.
He's back.
Okay, excellent. Moving on, uh, uh, citizens' comments. Uh, are there any citizens wishing to speak during citizens' comments? Please just state your name and address. Uh, Bernice, your hand has been raised the whole time. If you wish to speak, we can go ahead and go with you first if you'd like.
I do, and I actually,
Okay.
Uh, Bernice Marcy, et cetera. I want to thank you for the discussion and for bringing to light that this is a, the ordinance that we spoke of earlier, the proposed ordinance is very vague. And it, and also, I have looked at the Commonwealth of Mass G I S map, and a lot of the parcels have already changed hands from Commonwealth of Mass to Claremont, and that the use code for each of those parcels are one by one going from a use code of nine two four oh two oh one three two oh. So, so I don't know if it was, um, Councilman Chase or Moore, Gallagher, who, whoever brought that, like, where is this going? So when further discussion goes on, that's another question I have is how were use codes changed? And how did Commonwealth of Met, Land Mass become privately owned properties? So that's all I want to say. Appreciate it all. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Ivaldi?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, councilors at Ivaldi Boxford Lane. Um, it was good to hear Counselor Souza mention earlier that discussions have occurred by the Rules and Procedures Committee on several of the charter recommendations. However, I'd like to remind the council that it's been almost four months now since the Charter Review Committee delivered their recommendations to this body back on June twenty-ninth. During that meeting, several ordinances were submitted by Counselor Gallagher pertaining to the charter in preparation for the redistricting. And then subsequent to that, ten additional ordinances were submitted by Counselors Gallagher again and George at the council meeting on September seventh. I believe that all twelve ordinances were submitted to the Rules and Procedures Committee for further action. Other than the brief discussion held at last week's meeting, which I attended, on the first two ordinances related to the redistricting, I could be wrong, but I'm not aware that the Rules and Procedures Committee has spent a whole lot of time on any of the other recommendations. So on behalf of the former Charter Review Committee, I'd like to express disappointment and frustration that very little has been done yet on the charter recommendations. As a point of interest, uh, during the last month of its work, uh, the Charter Review Committee met weekly to complete its task back in June. So why is it that the Rules and Procedures Committee has not done the same over the summer months to move this effort forward? When citizens volunteer to work on important committees for the town, it should be expected that town officials also take the work seriously and prioritize it accordingly. I leave the council tonight with several questions, which I hope maybe someone will answer during counselor comments next on the agenda. First question is, why hasn't the Rules and Procedures Committee been working on the proposed charter recommendations during the summer months? And number two, outside of the ordinances related to the redistricting that impact the charter, what is the council's plan for addressing the majority of the other charter recommendations that submitted by the Charter Review Committee? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. Any other citizens, for citizens' comments? Okay, I don't see any. I'm gonna move next to council comments. First start with Counselor George.
No comments tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perry.
I do, and without a whole lot of words to say, so I will pass tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Perry. Counselor Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of, uh, brief comments. Uh, uh, I was on October twelfth, um, honored to attend the groundbreaking for the McKell Wayne School Apartments. And, um, at the request of, uh, Council President Russian, I was asked to deliver some remarks, which I was very pleased to do. Uh, the event was, um, very well attended and, uh, was a very enjoyable, uh, celebration uh, to commemorate the initiation of, of work on the, uh, on the school, which will uh, result in the creation of, uh, if I recall correctly, fifty-two units of, uh, uh, so-called workfare housing. And, uh, it was attended by, um, uh, our state senator, Mark Pacheco, uh, attended as well by, um, our Lieutenant Governor, Karen Polito. And I think that the, uh, the job that was done by, uh, MPC Development and Capstone Communities, uh, by, uh, Matt Zaler and Jason Korp was, uh, really tremendous, and it was a very enjoyable and, uh, um, a thoroughly entertaining event. And I'm, I'm pleased that that property is now, um, about to come online and provide much-needed housing, uh, in our community.
One other, just quick comment. With respect to the pub, the public forum comments tonight, I appreciate the fact that a number of residents of the Lake Shore Drive community appeared and offered comments. They voiced their concerns about the proposed petition for the abandonment of a portion of Lake Shore Drive. I think that the appropriate step has been taken to address these concerns by sending this item to the Community and Economic Development Committee. And I, I do hope that the committee will be able to fully examine the context in which this petition comes forward and consider it in view of the work that was done some eighteen months ago when we considered a similar or a proposal for some of that same property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counselor Souza?
Um, Counselor Chase just said about what I wanted to, sending it to the proper committees and have it worked on. No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank the councilors who worked on finding us a new town council clerk. That's really exciting news, and I look forward to meeting her. The other thing I would say is, I do sit on rules and procedures. If there are people that are interested in discussing the charter changes, please reach out to me and welcome the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmore. Counselor Wood?
Yeah, great news about the council clerk. Good timing. I wanted to point out an email that we received yesterday regarding the, the new school building for the Bristol Plymouth. So often when we talk about schools, we talk about, you know, our own elementary school, which is it, it's actually a shared resource with Rainham because kindergarten is going to be shared in that school. And we also talk about, you know, the high school is regional resource, and then the, you know, the, the items of other things. But this email, and I, I won't read it, but, you know, highlights something that we need to keep an eye on also, which is the cost of other students in going to school elsewhere. And so, you know, our share of the building, it looks like, is going to be roughly, I'm not going to state the cost, but the key item is, is a thirty-nine dollars per average household as one of the items. And this is, this is a cost that isn't through a debt exclusion vehicle, and it's not through another thing. So I think as we go through the budget process, we should probably include this as a topic. You know, we always talk about schools as an assessment, school is debt exclusion. We also need to be more cognizant of what's happening at some of our other ancillary schools such as BP. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. Counselor Colin Bodis?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thanks.
Okay, just had one brief comment. I just wanted to follow up with the comments from Mr. Ivaldi. Certainly understand and appreciate hi- his personal frustration with the council and rules and procedures. I can only assure you that we will work to get that done. And I make the public offer, as the council president, to rules and procedures and any additional workshops and the additional legislation that's sitting there, so that we can hash that through, so it doesn't have to come back to the council for further discussion and delay. I'm willing to do that. It seems like it's been an effective tool for us to talk openly about rather complex issues and changes in town. So I'll just, I'll leave that there. With that, I will now entertain a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one little A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to adjourn from an executive session.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.